Good evening, everyone. I just want to give the people that are here in the audience a quick explanation of our meeting tonight because we have two meetings back-to-back. So we have a tax levy meeting, which will be very brief, and then as soon as that ends, we'll go into our business meeting, and we will do student and staff recognition. So we get to honor our students and our staff that are here tonight, and then we will have the amazing performances by our band and choir. So I just wanted to kind of set expectations. So you're like, am I in the right place? Yes, you are. Thank you. We are thrilled to have you tonight, as is Mr. Rogers, because he loves an audience for his presentation. So I'm going to call to order our special meeting of our levy hearing. Could I have roll call, please?
Ms. Angarola, Ms. Bayless, here. Mr. Becker, here. Ms. Hale, here. Mr. Hauptman, here. Mr. Condella, Ms. Sullivan, here.
Thank you. Could I get everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That was like the best pledge we've ever had. I now open the floor for public comments on the tax levy. Do we have any public comments on the levy this evening? Okay, there being no public comments, we will move on to the levy hearing, and I will turn the floor over to Mr. Rogers.
Okay, thank you. So that was from the best pledge of allegiance to the fastest levy hearing in the state of Illinois. So this is going to be nice. So this is the truth and taxation hearing for the tax levy. So since the district is requesting more than 5% increase to the tax levy, we're required to hold a truth and taxation note meeting. So just to give you an idea, we presented a tentative levy for approval at the November 19th meeting. On December 6th, we presented that in the newspaper for the public, and then today, we're hoping to approve it, and we will be filing with the county before the December 31st deadline. So just to give you an overview of what how CPI has gone the last couple of years, the district has been capped at 5% in the 2022 and 2023 levy. This levy is based off of a 3.4% Consumer Price Index. Now, we're trending for December 2024 CPI, we're looking at around 2.9 to 3%. So it is still dropping. And so this is just the overview page on what the district is requesting. So the blue column is the ask from the district. The yellow column is our best guess on what we believe we're going to get in terms of a tax levy. So the district is still limited to Consumer Price Index plus new property. So that is really a small amount of new property. We're anticipating about $100,000. So overall, the nice thing is though property values are rising, we got about a 6.6% increase in the value of property in the district. So the blue is what we are going to be requesting, and it just we are limited by the CPI plus new property. So that is it. Is there any questions that we have? So all the information is in the packet. We there's a lot of signature pages for tonight. So I'll just make sure we walk through all those, and I will be following with the county tomorrow.
Great. Thank you so much.
Okay, um, we again open the floor for public comments and petitions on non-agenda items. Do we have any public comments and petitions on non-agenda items for the levy? Okay, there being no public comments, we will move to adjourn the levy hearings. Could I get a motion to adjourn, please?
Move. Ms. Sullivan, yes. Mr. Becker, Ms. Bayless, yes. Ms. Hale, yes. Mr. Hauptman, yes. Mr. Condella.
Okay. Let me know if you're ready. Okay, I'm calling to order the combined meeting. You can wait to do roll call for District 76. Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Angarola, Ms. Bayless, here. Mr. Becker, here. Ms. Hale, here. Mr. Hauptman, here. Mr. Condella, Ms. Sullivan, here.
Now we open the floor for public comments on agenda items for our combined meeting agenda. Do we have any public comments? Okay, there being no public comments, we will move on to what you've all been very patiently waiting for, which is recognizing our outstanding staff and students, and then moving on to our holiday band and choir performance.
So thank you so much all for coming, family and friends and staff members. At this part of the meeting, we recognize staff as well as students who have exemplified our core values of Sparkle On. And this month in December, we are focusing on respect. So we focus on a letter each month, S-P-A-R-K-L-E-O-N. And like I said, today or this month, we are focused on respect. So I'm going to have our principals join me at the podium to recognize outstanding staff members who exemplify the core value of respect. And then we are going to invite staff members and teachers to come up and recognize their students.
Okay. All right. It is my absolute honor to nominate Erin Midstarfer for the Diamond Award. In every interaction, whether with students, parents, or colleagues, Erin embodies the essence of respect, treating everyone with kindness, patience, and dignity. She creates an inclusive and nurturing classroom where every student feels valued. Erin ensures that every voice is heard, fostering a sense of belonging that goes beyond academics. Erin can be heard in the hallways with students, building that respectful rapport with students and truly engaging them with their interests. She has created plans that revolve around favorite characters such as Sonic. Through respectful communication and unwavering fairness, she helps students not only learn but grow as compassionate individuals. Beyond the classroom, Erin is an exemplary colleague. She listens attentively, collaborates with purpose, and treats everyone as equals. She inspires those around her to strive for mutual understanding and kindness in all that we do. So Erin, come on up.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I'd like to say if you would. Just thank you for recognizing me. It's been a pleasure getting to know you and work with you and just the amazing environment that you're creating at our school. We really appreciate it, and thank you.
I am representing West Oak Intermediate School, and it is an absolute privilege to recognize Mrs. Sharon Tweed, our district's K-5 literacy instructional coach, whose work reflects our core value of respect in every way, through her actions, her words, and her passion for our students, staff, and the district. Respect is not something that Mrs. Tweed practices. It is at the very heart of who she is. It shows up in her dedication to our staff and students, her innovative approach to instruction, and her ability to make everyone around her feel seen, heard, and valued. One of Mrs. Tweed's greatest contribution has been her tireless efforts to level up instruction across the district. She doesn't settle for good enough. Instead, she meets teachers where they are and supports them in reaching new heights. Whether modeling lessons, providing coaching styles, or offering feedback, Sharon creates a safe space where teachers feel empowered to level up, grow, and learn. She inspires us all to take risks, try innovative things, and embrace the mindset that learning is a continuous journey, no matter how long you've been in the profession. She makes you feel safe. Her leadership in organizing the District 76 Loves to Read Initiative is another shining example of her commitment to excellence and connection. This initiative is not just about reading, it's about building a love for learning, fostering community, and reminding us all the joy that comes from a great book. Thank you, Mrs. Tweed, for your vision and dedication to students and staff. We are all inspired to connect over reading in ways that have brought our district closer together. Mrs. Tweed, you are a leader, a mentor, and a role model. Your ability to connect with people, challenge us to grow, and inspire us to be better reflects everything the core value of respect represents. You not only elevate instruction, you embrace, empower, and elevate all of us. On behalf of the entire district, thank you for your passion, your dedication, and your tireless efforts to make a difference. We are so grateful for you and the work you do each day for each child and each teacher. Congratulations, Mrs. Tweed. You are one of a kind and a true champion of respect. Sparkle on.
I'm just thank you, and thank you for always providing me with a safe space to try new things and to be able to level up.
Hey. So West Oak Middle School is honored to to recognize Chuck Chirino as our superintendent spotlight and Diamond Award winner here for for respect. Before we before we give him this award, I do have a little backstory, though. So I'm gonna, here we go. A couple months ago, our entire middle school staff took the human survey in order for us to better understand ourselves as individuals, but also to use our colleagues' strengths to enhance our teams as a whole. Upon analyzing our results at our Building Institute Day, it was easy to see a lot of commonalities in our teachers, except for Chuck. Of the seven personality traits that that we had most common in our school, with empathy being the most common, Chuck had but one common personality trait that matched his colleagues' top seven average strengths. This was flexibility. And I believe I believe the one the one that you had that nobody else had was, do you remember? I thought it was command, but, uh, command. So knowing Chuck for almost five years, and with with him being a seasoned teacher in in our building, Chuck at times will approach things a different a different way or see things differently than his group. Although his character traits are much more unique than many within our building, these traits allow him for allow him to connect with our students, parents, and staff in ways that others cannot. His kind, assertive, yet funny demeanor appeals to everyone, and his personality glows with positivity and purpose. For the for the people in the room that do not know Chuck, he is well-known for his jokes and his one-liners. So well-known that his team members have started keeping a book with a list of them. Some examples of these include, when a student asks for a Band-Aid, Chuck replies, "Sure, new or old." Another one would be when a student asks, "When, when, what are we doing for the day?" Chuck will reply, "Same thing as yesterday, but different." All right. What I admire about Chuck is this high level of respect that he exudes towards everyone, and the way he treats people with calm and in a calm and supportive tone. In doing this, Chuck is able to establish a strong lasting relationships with his staff and with with his students and colleagues. And we can't thank you enough here, Chuck, for all you do at West Oak Middle School. So thank you.
Right. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank the academy. Seriously, thank you. I was very shocked to hear that I was getting this award, and I'm very honored. So thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, now we are going to recognize students. So Mrs. Morley, do you know who is going to be introducing? All right. Mrs. Garcia and Mrs. Brogie.
We are a team, you know, so you're going to see us together like more often than not. But we are here to recognize one of our students. Her name is Celine. Celine represents the true meaning of respect in every aspect of her life. She listens attentively to others and treats everyone with kindness. Whether it's offering help to a classmate in need or showing empathy to someone having a tough day, Celine consistently demonstrates that respect goes beyond words. It's about actions. Her genuine consideration for others creates a positive and inclusive environment. Celine's approach to respect makes her a role model in school, inspiring others to follow her lead. Celine, we love you and thank you. Come on, Celine. Come on over.
Nice job, Celine. I would like to invite Mrs. Rogers and Ms. Schwander to the podium to recognize our West Oak Intermediate student, Trenton Queen. Come on up.
So I'm a little tall, so I'm gonna raise the microphone. Hello, my name is Grace Schwander. I'm Trenton's fifth grade teacher, and I'm presenting this award of respect to Trenton because he's shown progress in being respectful to teachers and students and peers at West Oak Intermediate School. Trenton has worked with Ms. Laura Rogers and Mr. Carr as well to take on a big responsibility of helping with morning morning announcements to help start our day on a positive note. He has worked with his peers in the classroom to show how he can work with them during activities and appreciates their own ideas. I look forward to continue working with Trenton this year to keep growing as a lifelong learner and to show us how he can sparkle on.
Trenton, thank you for being West Oak Intermediate School's announcement manager. Your leadership, respect, and responsibility to this important job has positively impacted our school. Trenton, continue to be the shining star you are.
Trenton is always reflective of himself and how he impacts others. Trenton is charismatic and brings a smile to all those around him. Trenton shows respect through helping others and leading by example. It is exciting watching you become a respectful and productive student.
Congratulations, Trenton. And now from West Oak Middle School, we have Ms. Enriquez, who is going to recognize Jose Perez.
Hello, I am Ms. Enriquez. I am Jose's social studies teacher. It's been a pleasure getting to know Jose this year in class. Academically, he's very bright. In class, he's always on task and will ask questions if he needs clarification or help. He's very self-directed and will offer to help students if they are in need of it. Socially, Jose is funny. He loves to joke around and gets along with his peers. He's always respectful and kind. His focus, participation, and positive attitude make a big difference in the class. He can be a leader amongst his peers and guide them to continue to work. He can create such a positive environment in the classroom. Jose is more than deserving for this month's superintendent spotlight. Thank you.
Before we have our holiday performances, I just want to share how special and important it is for our families to be here to recognize our students. When I was at Diamond Lake School yesterday, Jose's brother came up to me and says, "I am going to be at the board meeting tomorrow because my brother is getting an award." So I just want you to know, you are role models for not only your friends at school, but also your brothers and sisters, young and old. So keep doing the great work and sparkling on. And now, Mr. Kerr, would you please go get our students? So if you give us a brief minute, Ms. Porkowski and Mr. Mesa and Mr. Tripoli are going to bring in our musical performance of the choir as well as our band and orchestra. Enjoy the performance, and thank you again for coming tonight.
Volunteer to be here tonight and present some holiday.
Volunteer to be here tonight and present some holiday.
Volunteer to be here tonight and present some holiday.
Volunteer to be here tonight and present some holiday.
My idea of course.
It's in the valley that everyone can be a king. Wonderful, wonderful, wonderful.
It's in the valley that everyone can be a king. Wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. With the holiday greetings and gay happy feelings, my friends come to war. With the march from the east, it's a war. All these girls sing what's on the floor, the dinner girl in the night sky. They'll be scary, all stories and have all the glory, the Christmas is long ago. It's a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. It's in the valley that everyone can be a king. Wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. With the holiday greetings and gay happy feelings, my friends come to war. With the march from the east, it's a war. All these girls sing what's on the floor, the dinner girl in the night sky. They'll be scary, all stories and have all the glory, the Christmas is long ago. It's a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. With the holiday greetings and gay happy feelings, my friends come to war. With the march from the east, it's a war. All these girls sing what's on the floor, the dinner girl in the night sky. They'll be scary, all stories and have all the glory, the Christmas is long ago. It's a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. With the holiday greetings and gay happy feelings, my friends come to war. With the march from the east, it's a war. All these girls sing what's on the floor, the dinner girl in the night sky. They'll be scary, all stories and have all the glory, the Christmas is long ago. It's a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. With the holiday greetings and gay happy feelings, my friends come to war. With the march from the east, it's a war. All these girls sing what's on the floor, the dinner girl in the night sky. They'll be scary, all stories and have all the glory, the Christmas is long ago. It's a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. With the holiday greetings and gay happy feelings, my friends come to war. With the march from the east, it's a war. All these girls sing what's on the floor, the dinner girl in the night sky. They'll be scary, all stories and have all the glory, the Christmas is long ago. It's a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. With the holiday greetings and gay happy feelings, my friends come to war. With the march from the east, it's a war. All these girls sing what's on the floor, the dinner girl in the night sky. They'll be scary, all stories and have all the glory, the Christmas is long ago. It's a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. With the holiday greetings and gay happy feelings, my friends come to war. With the march from the east, it's a war. All these girls sing what's on the floor, the dinner girl in the night sky. They'll be scary, all stories and have all the glory, the Christmas is long ago. It's a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. With the holiday greetings and gay happy feelings, my friends come to war. With the march from the east, it's a war. All these girls sing what's on the floor, the dinner girl in the night sky. They'll be scary, all stories and have all the glory, the Christmas is long ago. It's a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. With the holiday greetings and gay happy feelings, my friends come to war. With the march from the east, it's a war. All these girls sing what's on the floor, the dinner girl in the night sky. They'll be scary, all stories and have all the glory, the Christmas is long ago. It's a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. With the holiday greetings and gay happy feelings, my friends come to war. With the march from the east, it's a war. All these girls sing what's on the floor, the dinner girl in the night sky. They'll be scary, all stories and have all the glory, the Christmas is long ago. It's a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. With the holiday greetings and gay happy feelings, my friends come to war. With the march from the east, it's a war. All these girls sing what's on the floor, the dinner girl in the night sky. They'll be scary, all stories and have all the glory, the Christmas is long ago. It's a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. With the holiday greetings and gay happy feelings, my friends come to war. With the march from the east, it's a war. All these girls sing what's on the floor, the dinner girl in the night sky. They'll be scary, all stories and have all the glory, the Christmas is long ago. It's a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. With the holiday greetings and gay happy feelings, my friends come to war. With the march from the east, it's a war. All these girls sing what's on the floor, the dinner girl in the night sky. They'll be scary, all stories and have all the glory, the Christmas is long ago. It's a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. With the holiday greetings and gay happy feelings, my friends come to war. With the march from the east, it's a war. All these girls sing what's on the floor, the dinner girl in the night sky. They'll be scary, all stories and have all the glory, the Christmas is long ago. It's a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. With the holiday greetings and gay happy feelings, my friends come to war. With the march from the east, it's a war. All these girls sing what's on the floor, the dinner girl in the night sky. They'll be scary, all stories and have all the glory, the Christmas is long ago. It's a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. With the holiday greetings and gay happy feelings, my friends come to war. With the march from the east, it's a war. All these girls sing what's on the floor, the dinner girl in the night sky. They'll be scary, all stories and have all the glory, the Christmas is long ago. It's a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. With the holiday greetings and gay happy feelings, my friends come to war. With the march from the east, it's a war. All these girls sing what's on the floor, the dinner girl in the night sky. They'll be scary, all stories and have all the glory, the Christmas is long ago. It's a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. With the holiday greetings and gay happy feelings, my friends come to war. With the march from the east, it's a war. All these girls sing what's on the floor, the dinner girl in the night sky. They'll be scary, all stories and have all the glory, the Christmas is long ago. It's a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. With the holiday greetings and gay happy feelings, my friends come to war. With the march from the east, it's a war. All these girls sing what's on the floor, the dinner girl in the night sky. They'll be scary, all stories and have all the glory, the Christmas is long ago. It's a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. With the holiday greetings and gay happy feelings, my friends come to war. With the march from the east, it's a war. All these girls sing what's on the floor, the dinner girl in the night sky. They'll be scary, all stories and have all the glory, the Christmas is long ago. It's a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. With the holiday greetings and gay happy feelings, my friends come to war. With the march from the east, it's a war. All these girls sing what's on the floor, the dinner girl in the night sky. They'll be scary, all stories and have all the glory, the Christmas is long ago.
And that concludes our presentations for the evening. The board is going to continue on with its meeting to do the regular business agenda. You are all welcome to stay, but we all know that you want to get those families home to bed. So we understand if you're going to leave. Thank you so much for coming tonight.
Thank you and congratulations, everyone.
I got two. Hold on, Trent, really quick. I need one more student to roll your picture. Oh, there it is. All right.
There you go. Good job, Trent, and I want to be able to see your face. I know.
Okay, we will continue on with our business meeting. The first item up on our business agenda is the omnibus vote agenda. Items under the omnibus vote agenda are considered routine and are non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. If anyone, board members, staff, administrator, or citizen wishes to have a separate vote on any item or items, that item or items will be pulled from the omnibus vote agenda and voted on separately. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the omnibus vote agenda items A through D as listed. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Second.
Mr. Candel, Mr. Hauptman?
Yes.
Ms. Bayless, yes. Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion is approved. The next item up for action is our personnel report. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the personnel items as depicted on the agenda. We have one new hire and one maternity leave. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Second. Mr. Becker? Sullivan? Yes. Ms. Bayless? Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
That motion is also approved. Oh, that's... I'm just trying to... I'm sorry, I'm trying to find the resolution. Yeah, it's just on my resolutions folder. So it's the truth and taxation resolution, right? It's okay. Yeah, I think it is there. Eric, that's correct, right? Okay. So whereas the Truth and Taxation Act requires that when provisions of the act are applicable, the taxing district must determine that less than 20 days prior to the official adoption of the aggregate levy of the district, the estimated amount of taxes necessary to be levied for the year. And whereas the estimated amounts of money necessary to be raised by taxation through the aggregate levy exceeds 105% of the amount of property taxes extended upon the final aggregate levy of the preceding year, public notice shall be given and a public hearing shall be held on the district's intent to adopt a tax levy in the amount which is more than 105% of said extension for the preceding year. And whereas the amount of property taxes extended upon the final aggregate levy for the year 2023 was $15,775,101, and where it is hereby determined that the estimated aggregate levy for year 2024 is $17,159,000. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of Diamond Lake Schools, District 76, Lake County, Illinois, as follows. Section 1, the statements set forth in the preamble heretofore are true and correct. Section 2, the percentage of increase of said aggregate levy for the estimated year of 2024 does exceed the taxes extended or abated upon the final aggregate levy for the district in year 2023 by 8.7%. Section 3, public notice shall be given in the Mundeline Daily Herald, a newspaper of general circulation published in the district, and a public hearing shall be held, all in the manner and time prescribed in said notice, which notice shall be in the following form and shall be published not more than 14 days or less than seven days prior to the hearing date. This resolution shall be in full force and effect forthwith upon its passage. May I have a motion to approve the truth and taxation resolution?
Move.
Second.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Hauptman?
Yes.
Ms. Bayless? Yes. Mr. Becker? Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Candel?
Okay, the levy is approved. Moving on to the next item up for action, which is approving the 2025-2026 school calendar. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake School District 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the 2025-2026 school calendar as presented by the district leadership team. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Mr. Becker? Mr. Candel? Ms. Bayless? Yes. Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Hauptman?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yeah.
That motion is also approved. Moving on to adopting press policies for Press 116. Did anyone have any questions or comments before we take action on this? Okay. Whereas policy creation and updates and changes to adopted policies are provided for District 76 through the subscription to Policy Reference Educational Subscription Service, Press from the Illinois Association of School Boards, IASB. And whereas the Policy Committee reviewed the policies and a first reading of the policies was held at the Committee of the Whole Meeting on November 19, 2024, therefore be it resolved, the Diamond Lake School District 76 Board of Education moves to approve the policy changes as presented and reviewed in IASB Press Issue 116. May I have a motion to approve, please? Second.
Ms. Bayless? Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Becker? Mr. Hauptman? Mr. Candel? Ms. Sullivan?
Yeah.
Okay, and then the last item up for action is approving the health, life, safety amendment. I don't know if you wanted to say anything about that, Eric. I think it's self-explanatory, but...
I think so as well. It's just it'll be used for the plumbing project. We just need to amend our life safety project.
Okay. Does anyone have any question? Okay. Then be it resolved, the Diamond Lake School District 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the health, life, safety amendment as presented by the district leadership team. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Mr. Becker? Mr. Hauptman?
Yes.
Ms. Bayless? Yes. Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Candel? Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay, that wraps up our business agenda. Moving on to board discussion.
There are two items. I'm going to let Mr. Rogers go ahead. If you want to just give an overview of the audit and then we can talk about looking at our calendars if there's a possibility to reschedule the January 21st board. So.
Thank you. I just attached the two documents. There's the Excel version and then the more narrative version. I saved you a print copy. If you would like one, I'd be happy to provide it, but that would be the audit report that is in there. So I just want to go over about four bullet points from the audit. Similar to the last few years, we received an unmodified opinion on regulatory cash basis of accounting, which just means there was sound internal controls and there are the financial statements were presented fairly in their opinion. So that's the highest we can get under the cash basis of accounting, which is good. There were no findings or deficiencies in our federal audit program. So we had our biggest federal grants. I'm sorry, our grant, federal grant program. We had no findings and we had our biggest grants that were audited this year. So tons of transactions. So I was really happy that that one went very favorably for us. And then our financial profile score went up from a 3.8 to a 3.9. So that is still, yeah, the highest we can get based on our long-term debt, but I was happy to see that went up. And then the district ended with just over $2.2 million surplus in our operating funds. So.
Can you just, like, thank you for all that?
Yep, that was highlights. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them this meeting or later.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. And then the first bullet point, I'm requesting the board, I had reviewed it with Mrs. Hale. If it would be okay, I have a scheduling conflict for the 21st of January, which is our next board meeting. There are no presentations scheduled. It would just be a regular board meeting, but would you be okay if we rescheduled it to the 28th at the same time? Okay. It's been from Mr. Candel? Okay, okay.
Okay, great.
Thank you. We will adjust the calendar, not only personally, but also on our website, and I appreciate flexibility. So let... We all talked about it as a DLT, so I'll update that DLT calendar, too. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Um, moving on to freedom of information requests. We had one and it was fulfilled. Notices and communications. David, did you already go to the seat all board meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, if you want to share. Thank you.
No, thank you. I'm not, but I appreciate you thinking of me.
Yeah, that's very interesting. Eric, like, our agreement with them, does that, that covers, like, if they make mistakes, we have to pay them for it?
No, still not. Still. Yeah, it's the last I heard, Steven Johnson. Many years. They have 15 to 17. That mean? Scott. This way here. You can still decide.
Yeah. What's the usual in contract, like, percentage increase year over year with them? This as well, we talk about when students are ready to return back to district. And in fact, right now, we have three students that are either starting the transition or just completing a transition back. So it's a constant process of evaluating what the needs are.
So Robin does a really good job of managing that, bringing students. District does get a higher rate of pay for students. SEALs not considered that.
Right. No, that's awful. I just think that just kind of seems shocking to me that it's like, oh, we mismanaged our money and so now you can all pay for it.
Exactly.
Sure.
Do they not do audits annually?
But the audit doesn't go through your full books for every single expense, though. Like, would the audit have caught this?
It's an under budget, what they're saying.
Yeah.
Audit wouldn't have caught that. I mean, it will catch it when it's... How come your actual expenses were 100% higher than budget? That's what it meant that it's not necessarily more of a head slant.
Right.
So, yeah, construction was 500,000 budgeted versus 6.3.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's more than just our bills coming in and you're out.
Yeah.
I don't think there are...
Oh. Yeah.
So even less.
None of it's, I mean, if this is a five-year, if they've been underbilling for five years, like, even if they're behind two years, it's not going to pull all of that, like...
Yeah, they're still a year.
Yeah.
Was the Executive Board surprised by this? Because my impression is that it's the same people on the Executive Board, like, forever.
Like it?
Thank you.
Okay. And then we have District 76 highlights.
So we have our November moment of the month was the Dia de los Muertos event. And then our December moment of the month was our student ambassadors from West Oak Middle School who presented at the Raising Student Achievement Conference, did an amazing job. I think you recognize some of those students in there. And then we celebrated Princesses Polly's first year anniversary in the district since the board approved her last December 12th. So we had a nice day of celebration for Polly. And then you can see the fabulous video that's been put together of all the pictures this past year. And then one highlight that didn't make it into the board packet, but it'll be there next month, but it might be a little bit late. I just want you to know, we sent out the parent engagement survey to, as you know, tell all the communities. Well, we always do internal contests with the principals who can get the most parents returned or families returned. Would anybody like to take a guess, a guess of which principal won that award this year?
I feel like it's not Mr. Peterson based on his reaction.
It was the intermediate building. Shocker. So we're going to do a little pizza party on Friday.
For yourselves.
For the whole kid. No, for all the kids, for all the kids. So it's going out tomorrow, but I thought I would take advantage of this and, you know, share the accomplishment of principal, of principal leadership. I think you two tied for second.
For John. He tied for last.
Something, I just wanted to say how wonderful it is to have Polly here. I just think that a lot of schools are looking to do something like this. And so thank you, Dr. Berger, for, I know she, I love her, but thank you for sharing her and doing all of the legwork to have her at the district. I think that our community really recognizes the benefit of therapy dogs in just a, just an everyday setting. I mean, as a dog owner myself, on bad days, it's always nice to cuddle with my dogs. And I think she has done tremendous work, not just for, you know, our most at need students, but just the community in general. So thank you so much for that. We're just very lucky to have her and you, so thank you.
No, and I agree. Thank you, Erica, and your husband for loving her and giving her a home because there's so much beyond just the school day, as I'm sure you all know who are dog owners, but just the training that she has to go through that Erica takes her to, but then being a true advocate and a spokesperson, a brand ambassador for C4C. I know she's gone and spoken to a lot of other schools and other organizations about the benefits of having a service dog. So I know we are, Erica as well as Polly are just great examples, role models and leaders in the community for that. So I want to thank her for that. And just to your point, it's not even just our students at need, but even just at celebration, like, we had the West Oak Intermediate spelling bee a few weeks ago. And when the students, they get upset, even though they have practiced and are doing very well, and when they miss a word, but they just didn't feel better by having Polly right there, you know, just to congratulate them and shake their hand. So it's a nice way to support, too. And that is all of our highlights.
Awesome.
And you're all invited to the West Oak Intermediate Pizza Party on Friday. Friday.
Mr. Rogers, like, I'll be right there.
30 to 12:30, I'm going to have my co-principals, all nine of them, serve with me, serve with me, yes.
Lovely.
Save us a slice.
Oh.
Okay, we move on to public comments and petitions on non-agenda items. Do we have any public comments and petitions? Okay, moving on to others. Do we have any others this evening? Yes. Oh, yeah. No, no, that's great. No, thank you. I forgot about that. That was great. Great. Thank you for going. Thank you for representing us. It is very interesting.
And I'm sorry, I have one other thing to... Did anybody else need to go? Just want to add, Friday, I was going to put it in my weekly update, but Friday, we will be posting for the West Oak Intermediate School principal starting next July, July 15th. But the timeline, I'll put it in my weekly update, but I just wanted you to see that because sometimes that posting will go out and it'll go out through to the community. So you'll see that first before the report, but I just want you to know. And then I'll include the timeline of keeping it posted, doing the screenings, the interviews, and then hoping to bring it to the board at the February 18th board meeting, the final candidate.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, does anyone have anything else? Okay, we do not have executive session this evening. So can I get a motion to adjourn our meeting?
No.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Becker? Ms. Bayless, yes?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Great, thank you, everybody. Thank you all. Have a very happy holiday. Happy New Year. Enjoy your time off.